House leaders, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to our press conference. We understand that most of our media colleagues are covering the kickoff rally for the national campaign. And we're also blessed to have One Rider Party List Representative, Rods Gutierrez, who still... we're still here, despite the... Hello, is there no campaign, sir?
There's no campaign.
There's no campaign. Okay, before we begin the question and answer portion of our press conference, I'd like to introduce our distinguished guest for today. We have House Assistant Majority Leader and Taguig City Second District Representative, Maria Amparo Maria Pammy J. Zamora, and One Rider Party List Representative, Rods El Gutierrez. Sir, can you give your short opening remarks?
Good morning, po, to our media colleagues here. And thank you for having us today. As mentioned by Sir Ryan, for a kickoff, there is no work to do. So I understand there would be questions addressed to us despite it being recessed. And we're excited to be here, po, to answer any questions that our friends in the media may have. Thank you.
Ma'am Pammy?
Good morning, po, to our media colleagues here. Now, the national campaign is starting for our senators and party list representatives. But we're still here for work. We are ready to take on your questions. Good morning, po.
Thank you. Rosalique Cus from UNTV, you're recognized for today's first question.
Good morning, po, Congs. For Cong Rods, the prosecution panel for the impeachment trial of VP Duterte, we've seen his reaction to the statement by SP Chees yesterday, that the impeachment trial is possible to start after the Sona of PBBM in July.
Well, I believe we have to take into consideration, po, that he, SP Chees Escudero, even prior to that statement, was involved in the Sona. He already mentioned before that while the impeachment court is not convened, they can already, they might be able to do preliminary processes, such as, for example, the secretariat, they are handling their own rules. They can also do their private consultations already with senators about how to go about it. But when, in his opinion, the Senate is already in session, which according to him, there should be preliminary action. The Dalois are smooth. So I think what he said after Sona, the trial, I think it was in reference to the trial proper, the general idea of our trial, the preliminary. But the whole trial per se, there are now advancements. Since the last impeachment hearing, that he mentioned by the senator, SP Escudero, that depending on the secretariat, depending on the rules that are proposed, they might take up, for example, and I think one thing that he mentioned was the evidence in pre-trial by commissioners. And the actual pre-trial proper, these are things that could be done prior. So I don't think it's on the timeline that he said after Sona. But all of that said, I think that'll be a reaction. And as always, especially as a member of the prosecution team, we would not want to comment on the propriety of that statement. And we respect and we leave it to the senator judges on how they see fit to convene the impeachment court.
Didn't you say it was a long wait, I think almost five months, to resolve the impeachment complaint? Cong Pammy can also answer.
In addition, whether or not it's a waste, it would really boil down to the interpretation on the timeline that should be followed. I think the SP has made his stand very clear. Although we've heard varying opinions, we've heard even experts on both sides. On one hand, there are some statements, this is a statement of fact. On one side, some would say that the inclusion of the word "forthwith", that means immediately. So this being a power under the Constitution that isn't legislative, it can be done regardless of preliminary action. But as mentioned, SP Escudero's opinion, and I would assume this would be the opinion of the rest of the Senate, that it requires preliminary action, like a legislative function. So whether or not it's a waste, I guess what they're trying to say is their hands would be tied on that interpretation. So I think that's the proper context for taking into the consideration when discussing the timeline.
On the prosecution panel, are there possible options for the impeachment trial? For example, encouraging President Marcos Jr. to call for a special session. Because SP Escudero, he said unless he called for a special session, they can't conduct a special session. But PBBM made a statement, unless the Senate requests him to call for a special session, he won't call. So it's like a joke.
To answer the question firstly, I didn't talk about the prosecution team. But as a personal opinion, I don't think the prosecution team will make any moves in that manner. We don't want to talk about it, only for the simple reason that we don't want to misinterpret as trying to unduly interfere or influence the yet-to-be-convinced impeachment court. We will be advocates in that court. And of course, anything that we might say or do might be tainted with bias. So we'd rather it not come from us. But as the Speaker said, SP Escudero, he is of the opinion that the president can call for a special session, even if the president is in a press conference, he may call for a special session. So we leave it to them on that decision. But as far as we're concerned, that would be a call on their parts.
Well, on my end, on our end, even though I'm not part of the prosecution team, Speaker Martin Ramaldes has already said that Congress respects and will not pressure the Senate. Although there are many legal luminaries who are advising the Senate to start right away, and while some advise otherwise, but as far as the House is concerned, we've already impeached the Vice President. And so we will really leave it to the Senate as to when they will convene to become a trial court.
Thank you, Rosalie, for today's second question. Let us call on Tina Pangliman Perez from JMA7.
For Prosec, Cong Rods, will you be requiring the presence of Vice President Sara Duterte during the impeachment trial?
Again, we've yet to talk about specific matters such as this. We haven't talked about it, not even the usual, like your question last time, we haven't updated, we haven't worked, we haven't got details. But as for the calling of the witnesses, first and foremost, it's not final. We, I can't say for sure if we will call. Although understandably, it would be better for the... It's actually the impeachment court will be able to, how do you call this? To mandate attendance, but on the part of the prosecution team, definitely it would be better if the subject of the impeachment were there. If she were to be presented as a witness also by their defense, then we would have the opportunity also to cross-examine. So any, in any, regardless of the preliminary, more testimony, more evidence, it goes both ways, for the prosecution team and for the defense. For the truth, any additional evidence or witness would be welcome.
Sir, how much of the evidence is with the prosecution team already?
Without saying too much, I think we have enough evidence. We have what we would say, I think it's more than enough. Especially considering, in our opinion, of course, it depends on that. The impeachment case is not strictly criminal. It's sui generis, we've always mentioned this, it's more akin to an administrative matter. Because the penalty, it's not punitive, there's no penalty. There's no fines and penalties that would be implemented. The impeachment court, the impeachment case, what happens here is, one, removal from office, and second, perpetual disqualification from public office. So it's not strictly criminal. So the strictest requirements of evidence that would apply to criminal case might not apply here. Depends, of course, on the impeachment court, depending on what they decide. At the end of the day, it would be a political exercise on the part of the senator judges and how they would vote. So as far as we're concerned, I think we have enough evidence to at least convince our senator judges of why they should side with the prosecution on this part. But with that said, there would still be more avenues for additional evidence, definitely. Especially when there are impeachment cases. There are some laws which actually have for their exemption impeachment cases for the request of more evidence. The power of subpoena, it's there in the impeachment court. So I'm pretty sure that the prosecution team will be open to all of these additional avenues to secure even more evidence.
Sir, does that include the representative, Cong Hun, 12.3 billion pesos unsettled financial transactions indebted during the tenure of the Vice President? Because he is calling on the House to investigate the issue. Therefore, there's no evidence on this. So will that be included?
Well, if we take a look preliminarily on the articles of our impeachment, it's there, the grounds, and one of it would be the corruption. This would really depend on the appreciation of the evidence. Although it is alarming that there would be... What's the amount, Tina? 12 billion?
12.3 billion, sir.
12.3 billion, this would be disallowance, would it?
Unsettled financial transactions, sir.
So if it would be taken in consider... Because it's possible, as what happens with COA, that there are findings in COA that are just in the regular course of business. But if it would be found to be in line with the allegations of our impeachment complaint, then I don't think the prosecution team would have any... They will not shy away from making use of such evidence, probably.
Thank you, po.
Thank you, Tina. Vivian Guglia from ABSABN.
In connection with Auntie Tina's question, are you also joining the call for the Good Government Committee to investigate the said transaction?
Unfortunately, as with many things, as a member now of the prosecution team, I think I would have to exercise more restraint than other members of the House. I will not join the call, although we will anticipate eagerly any developments there. Because we already filed the complaint, the House has already filed the complaint, and we are now anticipating the convening of the impeachment court. That would now be the proper venue for us to threshold these issues. If the prosecution team feels that there's not enough evidence or that they would like to seek additional evidence, the proper venue would also be through the impeachment court. Although nothing precludes the House from conducting inquiries and aid legislation as part of its legislative functions, and nothing would preclude other members of the House to answer this call of Congressmen.
On whether we plan to bring this up to the Good Government Committee? Yes, ma'am. In fact, we've discussed this with other members. Due to the proposal by Congressman Cong Hun, it's been discussed in the Committee on Good Government.
Also, Cong Rods, you mentioned that you have more than enough evidence for the prosecution on the impeachment trial of the Vice President. Why is there a need to request for the subpoena of the bank records?
Well, you don't stop just because you know that you have enough evidence. For as much as possible, you would like to establish, even if you have a strong case, any prosecutor would like to have an even stronger case. If the criminal court is preparing for evidence that would prove guilt beyond reasonable doubt, I think we should still have the diligence as a prosecution team to prepare for such quantum of evidence. So this means that we have to really establish our case. While the Senate impeachment court might settle for a lower standard of evidence, it still would never hurt your case to become prepared with even more evidence. And aside from that, aside from just the objective of the impeachment court, this is also a venue, for us to learn the truth. Because that has been a constant call, even in the House. The budget hearings, we don't attend, we don't cooperate, regardless of what happened back then, the committee hearings with Good Governance, committee hearings with QUAD, in cases that weren't clean. Regardless of what happened. So the impeachment court now, aside from a venue for redress in relation to these offenses, it is also a venue for the truth to finally be revealed. So this is something that we like to stick to, probably.
I think that's in relation to Article 4, the disclosure of assets and properties sold in. But even without it, for example, if the subpoena isn't granted, will the current evidence on that particular article stand?
We believe so. Actually, a lot of the push and pull in the complaint would be which articles to include. And by its inclusion and by its approval, by not just one third of the House, but by 80% right now, I think that speaks volumes of the confidence that the House has in the evidence that would back this article.
Also, you mentioned earlier that there are comments there on the schedule of the impeachment trial. Are you saying that justified the schedule of the impeachment trial to begin in July after Sona?
I would not say justified. I'm just saying, as a reaction, as the ma'am Rose said, given the context of which SP Escudero has made his remarks, given the context that we know which interpretation the SP has adopted, given the context of the proceedings in the Senate, according to none other than the Senate President, I believe then that is the practical consequence. The timeline would be the practical consequence. But as to the justification, we leave it up to them, we leave it up to the people to see if it is justified. As mentioned, we will not make any calls for the Senate to rush this so that we would want to avoid any tainting of partiality, tainting of bias. But with that said, as mentioned, there are legal luminaries, as the ma'am Pammy said, that are of the opinion that they are of the opinion of a different interpretation. While SP Escudero is standing up, the interpretation should still be still within the bounds of the Senate's legislative calendar, within the bounds of preliminary action. There is an interpretation that, as the Speaker said, the trial should proceed forthwith, meaning immediately. And given that there is an interpretation that it's not legislative function, constituent power, it's mandatory authority within the Constitution itself that they can implement independent of legislative functions. Then, there is also that, that's the interpretation, that it should follow a faster timeline. So with the justification, it would depend on the interpretation. But that's all, I was just commenting on the context of which the statements were made.
Having said that, if July is still there, 20th Congress is there? Is there still point for the members of the 19th Congress, prosecution panel under the 19th Congress, to prepare for the impeachment trial?
Well, as we said before, ready or not, I mean, here or not, we have to be ready. Whether it would be as early as March or whether it would be the next Congress, the prosecution team will do its job, having been elected by the members of Congress, in its constitutional duty to pursue this impeachment case. It would not be, it's not wasted, if ever, for whatever reason, for example, it crosses the 20th Congress and there would be a new set of prosecutors. We would be glad that at least we've done our part, we're ready for our articles of impeachment, we're ready for our evidence, we're ready for our witnesses that we would like to call, and we would happily pass it on to the next batch, for whatever reason.
Do you have any opinions that should be refiled, I mean, re-submitted? Or the new Congress, can it change the outcome? Or can it say to the Senate that it shouldn't continue the impeachment trial? Is that what you think about that? What's your opinion on that? What's happening with the 20th Congress?
Again, this would come well down to interpretation. But I think it's very clear, now that we have actually filed. The, according to the Speaker, the power to initiate impeachment cases is vested in the House. And this has already been done by the House. So we actually have pending impeachment complaint. So whether or not that could be stopped by the next Congress, I don't think it would be held by that. I understand there is an interpretation that, according to some legal luminaries, that once the 19th Congress is over, no business can be carried over to the 20th. But I think that was another, based on the interpretation, on legislative functions. I think a case that was cited for that was Garciliano versus, I forgot, sorry, I forgot the specific case. But when I read it, it was particular, that was regarding a Senate inquiry. It's not an impeachment complaint, it's not a constituent power. So I leave it to that, regardless of what the interpretation was. But for me personally, my interpretation is that it's continuing. An impeachment case filed now can still be tried the next. And we have, although it's not strict in the strictest sense, our basis, but historically, it's good, first of all, the United States has had experience. As we know, our Constitution leaves some parts, it's based on US Constitution, US jurisprudence, their body of laws. And there in the US, it's happened, the Senate is a continuing body. And in, I think, four instances of impeachment, one Congress files the impeachment complaint, and it was already tried in the next Congress. So we have bases on that. Second, I am more akin to adopting the interpretation of SP Escudero. He gave a very logical example. When we look at our collegiate courts, for example, Supreme Court, when we look at the Court of Appeals, and look at San Diego, when there are many of our justices, there are many of our justices. Just because, for example, if you're a lawyer, or if you're retired, or resigned, it doesn't mean that the case is overturned. It's still the case. So I think these two put together would make more sense in the context of an impeachment complaint, rather than the refiling interpretation.
Thank you, Vivian. Next questions will come from Earl Tobias of IBC13.
Cong Pammy, Cong Rods, good morning. One other topic, House Majority Leader Manuel Dalipe. He mentioned that he is filing cases against Speaker Ramaldes and other House leaders, the cases that he filed for the 2025 budget. On his words, he said, "Any attempt to portray it otherwise is a clear distortion of facts and an attack of legislative process itself." Furthermore, he said that it's a diversionary tactic, because more telling is the involvement of former Speaker Pantalon Alvarez as one of the complainants, as a sitting member of the House during the deliberations of the 2025 GA. He had every opportunity to raise objections, questions, and allocations. Your sentiments?
On my end, I'd like to clarify that it is anyone's absolute right to file any case. And it's very good that they filed so that it didn't go through the proper channels and that the House leadership will squarely face that. Having said that, I want to take note that it's very ironic that Mr. Alvarez barely participated in the non-stop budget hearings that we've had for the 2025 budget, whether at committee level or at preliminary. It's not a concern, as Assistant Majority Leader, I'm on the floor. I saw it. So it's there, I hope that if there's a chance, if there's a question, I hope there's a answer.
Additional, probably, not so much in the statement of Dalipe, but more on a comment on the nature that they filed. I think, of course, as the ma'am Pammy said, we would always welcome and respect everyone's right to seek redress, grievance before the court. It's okay, if we see that there's cause of action, we can file. But it's important to ask the wise. Although we don't want to impute any malice on the part of those who filed, it's just really questionable. Personally, without going into the context that there was a prior redress in the House, that it wasn't asked. The case itself, I think, if the question is really in relation, not to politics, but to the law itself, shouldn't it have been filed before the Supreme Court regarding Rule 65? Usually, when there's a question about a particular issue, the redress is in the Supreme Court. It's not criminal, because it's a political function, the process of the issue. So there's no enrichment alleged, I think, in the criminal nature that they are now filing. So it's just curious on my part, why is that the venue that they chose? And then, if you also look at the cast of characters, I understand the issue is BiCam, but it's the House responding, to which a member is Cong Alvarez, like mentioned by Cong Pammy, that there would have been a prior, he could have questioned it before. So while we welcome, I think it would have been better for the purposes, if the question is the issue of the blank, it would have been better for the Supreme Court to rule on the procedures that the House would take. We stand by what the leadership said, we stand by what the acting Chair Kimbo said, that it was all done with authority of BiCam. So if there's a problem with that authority, if it is flawed in any way, that should have been questioned, rather than the allegedly criminal act of filling the blanks. So these are just some questions that I think, probably, that should be asked by the person, in relation to the context of the filing of that case.
Follow-up, Congs. Being that Cong Pammy said you were active during the budget process and the deliberations, on the preliminary or at the committee hearing, would you think this filing of cases would gain traction? Or at the end of the day, will the truth be revealed that the House did its duty well?
First of all, I want to say that the Speaker isn't even part of the BiCam. So I hope they're clear, what they're saying. If it's about the BiCam, the case, the Speaker isn't part of it. Next, what's the question?
Do you think it's progressing?
Well, we'll leave it to the courts. For the preparation, the House leadership is ready to answer anything at any time.
Last from my end. If it's just about attendance or about the impeachment court, given that there is enough evidence, and you said it's better if she attends, but if she doesn't go, is there a strategy? Or is that one of the things that the House prosecution panel planned? In case, would it be BP that doesn't die?
Yes, I would say ready. Not intentionally planned, although historically, she doesn't attend our hearings. But you have to be prepared when you're seeking a case like this. You have to be, you have to stand by your complaint with all evidence that you might have and anticipating also the evidence that you might not be able to get. You don't file the case that maybe it's possible to obtain evidence. So I would say what we would like to achieve with this, definitely, as advocating for the impeachment complaint, to establish the evidence independently of whatever the other party might produce. So it's possible, and we do have our own evidence, we have our own lineup of witnesses that would have the tendency to establish the case. So that's it.
Thank you, Earl. Billy Begas from Abante Politico, you're recognized.
I'm just saying your opinion. The Senate is insisting. They postponed it in February to not let the articles of... nag-adjourn sila na February 2 ng hindi nagagalaw 'yung articles of impeachment. Pero meron pong column sa Inquirer. Ang point naman niya, eh pwede naman kasing hindi mo na nag-adjourn 'yung Senate, kasi based dun sa legislative calendar, pwede mag-session ng House and Senate hanggang Friday, February 7. Comment lang po.
Ang comment ko ay tamak habili. Kasi base sa schedule, sa napagkasundo ang calendar of session, ang third regular session, ang pag resume ng session ay nagsisimula... Ay nagsimula nung January 13, 2025, at nagtatapos ng Feb. 7, 2025. Natapos ng session ang plenary session nila nung Feb. 5, pero technically may panahon pa, may dalawang araw pa po. Pero having said that, again, ginagalang natin ang... Kung ano man ang gagawin ng ating Senado. At on the end ng House, na-impeach na po namin si Vice President Sara Duterte.
In addition lang po, no, siguro, again, this is all harping on that one interpretation. It is bound by legislative functions, by the term nga po legislative calendar. In addition to what Kong Pammy said, on that layer, sa legislative palang, mukhang may oras pa pala. But even before that, I still would... I'm of the interpretation of the opinion, and doon pa rin po tayo na impeachment ay constituent power, not bound by 'yung legislative rules, legislative function, and therefore not bound by the legislative calendar. But yun lang po 'yung in addition, siguro, Pos Billy.
Thank you, Billy. Next question from Jelley Mendez of DWIC.
Sir, nabanggit niyo po kanina, 'yung welcome po sa camera, 'yung mga gusto pang tumistigo or 'yung may mga karagdagan pang evidencia. Sa Senado po ba, possible na i-recommend niyo rin 'yung mga tumistigo dun sa mga nakaraang pagdinig?
Yes po, anything's possible po. I don't think there is any prohibition on the part of... I don't think any prohibition will be adopted by 'yung impeachment court na saying kung may testigo from a previous hearing, di na po pwede gamitin. And the opposite nga po, mas malakas nga po 'yung kaso ng mga testigo that appear before a previous hearing, they might not even have to attend 'yung sa impeachment court. Kasi nga po, under oath na po 'yung mga statements nila. So I think that's one opinion that would even make it stronger basis na sila pa po 'yung maging... 'Yung testigo po nila 'yung maging basis. So yun lang po.
Sir, your side po regarding dito sa... Payag po ni SP Escudero na minamadali daw po ng mga kongresista, 'yung Senado regarding sa impeachment?
Di po ako sure kung saan po nagagaling 'yung idea na minamadali by the timing lang po siguro ng pag-file ng House, pag-transmit ng House, it was on the last day. I don't think any pressure was meant to be exerted on the Senate. And... But understandably, on a personal level, meron naman po talagang mga may opinyon na dapat gawin ito agad-agad, whether these are personal sentiments of congressmen, 'yung ating mga kababayan, of certain officials of the House. Pero I don't think there was any official move, action, or communication from the House that would indicate in any way na minamadali po sila. So I'm not quite sure po kung saan po 'yung nagagaling. But I would understand po with the... In a court of public opinion, parang baka doon po nanggaling 'yung sentiment na parang rushed po siya.
Sir, 'yung payag naman po na hindi daw po magpapatawag ng special session 'yung Senado dahil hindi naman daw po espesyal, si BP Sara.
That would be the wisdom of the Senate po siguro. The consideration of the special session would be something to be considered by first and foremost the President in calling for the special session and the Senate po for requesting it if ever. So if, uh, in their opinion, in their wisdom, yun 'yung reasoning po nila, then we would have to respect that po siguro.
Thank you, Jelley. Are there any further questions from our media colleagues here? If there are none, we're going to entertain few questions from our media friends who are now covering the kickoff rally of administrations late sa Alianza para sa bagong Pilipinas, who are now in Ilocos Norte. About sir? Phone in. Okay, from Kat Porbes. Sir, first question, ma'am, magiging election issue ba itong impeachment ni BP Sara? And then may reaction po ba kayo dun sa survey ng SWU sa nagsasabing pabor sila sa Ayuda ang ibinibigay ng pamahalaan?
Two questions. On the first question, I think definitely magiging election issue po ito, and it should be welcome. I think this is a sentiment already mentioned also by Senate President Escudero na compared to 'yung usual election po natin na ang binuboto po natin ay base sa kasikatan or personality politics. At least ngayon, magkakaroon tayo ng issue kung ano po ang tingin ng ating mga kandidato sa impeachment complaint. And mas makita po natin kung ano ang kanilang stand, ano po ang kanilang gagawin, ano po ang kanilang mga personal conviction. So although not strictly requirement for election, 'yung, I mean, not strictly requirement ang plataforma or issues like this sa isang election, the fact that it's being... The election will happen now in the midst this context, I think it really will be an election issue. And I think it is something that should be welcome, po, no? Hindi po dapat siya maging consideration na external factor. So yun.
Kung sa katanungan, kung ito ay election issue, absolutely naniniwala po ako na ito ay isang election issue dahil dapat nating tanungin ng ating mga ihinhahalal kung papaano ba... Kung dapat bang panugutin ang mga tao patungkol sa pagwaldas ng pera ng bayan, patungkol sa hindi paggamit ng tama ng pondo ng bayan, patungkol sa hindi pagsunod sa... Sa ligang batas, patungkol sa paggamit ng pondo ng bayan. So isang malaking test po 'yan sa lahat ng kandidato, sa aming mga paninindigan para sa bayan. Maraming salamat po.
Sir, ma'am, your second question about Ayuda.
Well, uh, personally, masayang-masaya ako dun sa survey na yun kasi it vindicates what we've always said, no? Na itong mga issues patungkol sa Ayuda ay pawang ingay lamang, at talaga namang hinahanap ito ng taong bayan. Kasi 'yung four piece, dinedirekta 'yan... Dinedirekta 'yan para sa talagang mga... Sa poorest of the poor, ito namang akap ay nakadirekta para sa mga near poor na isa ring malaking porsyento ng ating populasyon. Kaya masaya po kami na yun po ang lumabas sa survey kasi ito naman ay bagay na talagang pinaniniwalaan namin nun pa man.
Thank you, sir and ma'am. Another question, last question from Gablalo, Inquirer Online. According po kay former Supreme Court Justice Adolp Askunya, a premier of the 1987 Constitution, imigitly po talaga dapat gawin ang Senado ang kanilang trabaho sa impeachment. Imigit as in ngayon na at hindi after four months or after Sona? Any comment po?
I think si former Justice Askuna, 'yung isa po sa legal luminaries that I was referring to, nandun po siya sa interpretasyon na dapat po talaga may... Sagawa na 'yung ating impeachment trial. If I'm not mistaken po, 'yung kanyang opinyon, if I read it right, yun nga po 'yung nasaside na hindi po legislative function, 'yung impeachment, ito po ay constituent power. Ang I think basis nito is that if you look at 'yung proceedings po natin for legislative function, nasa Article 6 po yun, on legislative powers of the legislative branch. Pero 'yung article, I think it was Article 13 po, no, 'yung impeachment is an accountability of public officers. So I think ginawa niyang basis yun for the interpretation na it is a constituent power independent of 'yung legislative functions of the Senate and Congress, and therefore it must be taken on its own timeline. 'Yung interpret nga po, ng... And the trial shall proceed forthwith, 'yung forthwith being agad. Interpretation na ito should be taken independently sa legislative. So I think doon po nanggagaling. And if the question is 'yung reaction po doon, ako personally, I do stand by that interpretation. And I don't think he is alone. I think there are other legal luminaries who are of the opinion, po, no, na dapat na sa constituent power interpretation, 'yung impeachment case.
Ma'am Pammy, okay na. Thank you. Before we conclude our press conference, sir, ma'am, baka meron kayong ano, parting words for today's press con?
Una, maraming-maraming salamat sa ating House media, sa inyong mga katanungan. Hindi po... Hindi po porket tumigil na po ang plenary session, ay tumitigil po ang pagtrabaho namin dito sa House. Tuloy-tuloy pa rin po, kahit po panahon na ng kampanya para sa iba nating mga kandidato. Tuloy-tuloy pa rin po ang pagtatrabaho ng inyong mga House members. Maraming salamat.
Likewise, maraming salamat po sa ating mga kaibigan sa media. Thank you for the opportunity. Sana po naisagot namin ang inyong mga katanungan. And I guess a parting message, kasi start na po officially ng election campaign na vote wisely na lang po, you know, for everyone. Let's take everything into consideration. Opo, so yun lang, something na malalapo natin sa ating mga kababayan in the time of election period. Talagang pakinggan po talaga nating ating mga kandidato. Gawing basahan po dito ay plataforma at action, hindi lamang 'yung kanilang kasikatan or personality politics. Yun lamang po, maraming salamat.
With that, thank you. House Assistant Majority Leader and Tagik City Second District Representative.